Marcus, overview?
Yes, okay. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. I have one quick introduction and two very brief updates. I would like to first introduce you to Michael Wasserberg, who's our new Director of the Office in Homelessness. Michael has over 20 years of experience. He comes to us most recently from Chicago, the Public Action to Deliver Shelter in Illinois, I'm sorry. And it's great to have him here. As a matter of fact, you will recall that Sarah Page Fuller, who was in that position, who is now in the CSB, made this possible, and we're very excited to have Michael with us. So, thanks, Mike. Okay. So, I actually, the Vice Mayor just mentioned to me that I've never made a formal introduction of our Human Services, excuse me, Human Resources Director, Capri Stanley, who's with us, who's been with us, please stand up, Capri, who's been with us for a while and who's been doing some great things. So, forgive me, Capri, for not making that introduction. And very briefly, before I turn it back over to you, Mayor and Council, we have some good news from Lori Crouch, and then Ron wants, Ron will give us a brief update on food trucks in the lottery this last week.
I just wanted to give you a brief overview of some of the national awards that Norfolk has won within really the last week or in a half. I think the manager briefed you the last time we worked together about the Bronze Telly Award, last, not last, a week and a half ago, before we went to Denver. We won an award for Me, Great and Imagine. Public Relations Society of America recognized our efforts for a community relations campaign less than $3,499. That's what it says on the Great Blue Site Award in my office. But they, we were noted by judges out in Arizona for our efforts to do, really, they were just impressed with the fact that we were able to gather a large group of the community together in a very creative, innovative way and not spend a lot of money to do it. So, we were recognized nationally by Public Relations Society of America, and then, of course, I was shamelessly emailing you all in Denver. Last Sunday night, Norfolk won the All-America City Award 2013. We traveled with a delegation of 10 folks on our team, residents, staff, and manager did a great job as our narrator, and if you haven't seen the video, it's on our Facebook page. We put together a 10-minute presentation and then took about 10 minutes of questions from the judges. Our focus this year was on our military initiatives, our flooding strategies, and our Neighbors Building Neighborhoods program, and it was just really great. The residents hit a home run for us. Not only could, not only were they just great in the presentation, they stepped up to the microphone to answer the judges' questions. These folks are highly engaged in our community, highly engaged in what the city is doing, and they expressed what our partnership, so great, I really think with, I mean, they just did a great job. They brought us over the edge. It was exciting when we were talking to the judges afterwards, you know, they said everyone in that room wanted to hear Norfolk. The room was packed. You could go and watch everyone's presentations. Our presentation was packed, not a seat empty in the house, and the judges said afterwards, they were just really impressed, and the head judge said, you know, "We had about seven more questions we wanted to ask you, but they could only ask us three in the timeframe." So, it made us all feel good that we are really leading the way when it comes to veterans, to flooding, to civic engagement right here in Norfolk, and it was just an exciting time. So, we are shamelessly plugging this now. It's on all of our email signatures, and we're going to be putting things on our vehicles, and we're just working with Bob and his team. We're coming up with ways to just continue to share this with the city and the community. The Neighbors Building Neighborhoods Committee is planning an event for the city to celebrate as well, so.
Is there anyone who can put it up on the interstates as you come into the city?
We are working on signage. We talked about signage. We had it, Wayne Shank was awesome with the airport. I called him in Denver, I was in Chicago on my way back, and I said, "Wayne, meet the manager at the airport," and I, on the marquees, put it up, and it was there when we got off the plane a couple hours later. It's been up on the Seven Venues Digital Board, on the Notting Hues Board. I mean, we were making phone calls and emailing people at midnight on Sunday after we went to Denver, so it's been, it's been great fun.
I can feel the enthusiasm in your email.
I'm so excited. Well, I, for Marcus, I think lost circulation in his hair because you were just sitting there listening, the way she announced it. I was like, "Oh."
Laurie, nice going, and everybody who took part in it. Despite the sort of modest support you got from the council, which might be an overstatement, I really think you guys pushed ahead and made us all very proud. So, thank you for that. Thank you, Marcus. Everybody got involved in that. Thanks. Okay. Andy, anything?
Two things. Marcus, we have been discussing whether or not we were open July 5th. There are a lot of places that are closed July 5th, and Marcus, I don't know if you made a decision on that. Are you considering it?
At this point, we remain open.
You know, but just to let you know, I know our bit, we're closing on the 5th in our office. I don't know what others are doing, but have you checked around with other cities if they're open?
I believe Portsmouth is contemplating closing, and Newport News and Hampton are closed.
You may want to think about if other jurisdictions are doing that. Just a thought. There's some discussion about the, it's end of June, and I think my 365 pass is up. How's that working for city employees, including us?
Sure. The, a couple of things, and step in if I mess this up. We, last year, the goal was to have light rail free. Because it's difficult to figure out whether or not a ride begins with light rail or begins on the bus, what occurred is that we hit the go-pass, which had both light rail and the bus service free. When HRT started to renegotiate these deals, it cost a lot more. So, what we did was we locked into those individuals who we knew rode the bus, and I believe that was close to 600 individuals. So, we wanted to make sure that we provided an opportunity for them to continue utilizing both the light rail and the bus service. So, the light rail, I'm not supposed to say free. There is no cost for the rider to ride light rail next year. We're dealing with that from the city's perspective. So, all employees-
Beginning July 1.
Beginning July 1 will continue to be able to ride light rail at no expense to them. But we are having, I think, in the neighborhood, about 600 go-passes that will be available to those individuals who depended upon more than just light rail at a deep, deep discount.
I was, just if I could follow. It's, does Norfolk PD understand that we don't need the 365 pass? Or can we at least explain to them that all we need to do is show a city ID, not getting a ticket?
Let me make sure that's what's going to happen July 1st. Is July 1st, is the same thing, we just show an ID? Yes.
So, they're familiar with it. We're good.
Okay.
Question.
Thank you. That's what I didn't know.
Just want to piggyback.
If I could just, go ahead, piggyback that. I have one other.
Yeah, I just want to ask you, you, we're paying for these passes, even though you said free, but there's a cost associated with each employee that receives, that benefit. You buy a number of light rail passes, so if you got, I don't know if you get $7,000 out of it, is there?
Right. So, the light rail, we are absorbing the cost associated with light rail. So, in other words, light rail's going to run, and it's going to be the fare box, and it's going to be revenue outside the fare box. So-
We pay, we-
Yes.
We got a number.
We have, we have a number, yes.
And we said, "With X number of employees, we're going to give a bad X number of tickets for light rail, and this is what we're going to pay for."
Well, for light rail, so we, let's divide it up. For light rail, we're going to have the same system as last year, where it's no expense to ride the light rail. Now, if somebody wants a go-pass, which means they're going to get on, get on a bus, and there is some cost to that.
But, 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 at the end of the day, are we still, you say there's no cost to rail, light rail?
Right. We, we pay all the expenses of the light rail, so it doesn't make any sense-
Doesn't make any difference.
To charge, it doesn't make any difference.
Okay.
And they changed the go-pass because we would, we, they put that in motion, Mr. Shuket, to get people riding, get them used to riding, and put it, financially, they needed to change the-
I don't know if we-
Because the city in Norfolk makes 42 percent.
What's the difference? You got some employees that have them that don't use them.
Right.
So, would it make sense to streamline your departments and say, "Look, you know, you, you got individuals that don't use them." But that's what I was trying to figure out.
Yeah.
Don't make a difference.
Yeah. But your point's about, for the go-passes, we did just that. Why would we purchase 4,000 go-passes if only 600 people are using them? So, that's where we start. We stuck with utilization.
Okay. That's all. Also, I think that council needs to know, this is a point of information. I'm chair, through being on council of the Hamburg Regional Jail, and being chair, just to give you a quick update as to where we are. We've met last week at our quarterly meeting. In 2002, we began taking immigration inmates, and those immigration inmates totaled, and I'm going to give you a ballpark, most recently around 400 and some inmates. We are now down to zero, and it's the first time that we've been at zero since 2002. There's various reasons, we think, as to why that may have occurred. Nothing that the jail has done. There's been a new facility opened outside of Farmville with federal money. There's Rappahannock Jail, which is closer to DC, which they may have transferred inmates to. We are, have set up a meeting, we're trying to set a meeting through Sheriff Roberts in Hampton, to find out why we are in this position of zero. Why is that significant to us, but keeping in mind that for every federal inmate that's there, feds pay that freight? That being said, we have 400 bed spaces that we would have to consider through the jurisdiction over it. We do have money in savings, but at some point, that may be an issue that we have to deal with as municipality, and it could affect our bottom lines. So, you need to understand that that's something that we may have to deal with in the next six to, six months, 12 months. We hope, and we've heard, that it's possible that these inmates will come back. We've heard it was an issue of sequestration, but it is, could have some impact as to our budget when it comes to that. So, to give you that little bit of a forewarning, we're trying to figure out why. We think we know what it is, nothing that we did wrong, but it is maybe it could affect us. Now, of course, you have Portsmouth. We don't know where their council will be at some point in the future, whether or not they will build their own jail, whether they'll attach it to the regional jail. Of all the ironies in the world, we're down 400 inmates. That's about how many they have in their city jail, you know, if they were looking to redevelop their property. So, we don't know where they're going to be. Portsmouth, there's always a discussion when it comes to that, but I think that it's something that all of you need to know about, so that way, six months, 12 months down the road, that we're not caught by surprise if the per diem of our own inmates are affected, so.
And what's our occupancy?
You know, I couldn't tell you off. You know, I can't, I don't remember, I had that, Terry. I think we have 250.
250 beds?
Yeah. We, I think we do 250 in Norfolk, and we fill it. I'm trying to remember, I guess it's got to be close to 1,000 right now.
So, there's 1,000 beds, beds in the regional jail?
And I'm, I'm just giving you the ballpark. But we're short 400 right now, meaning 400 people are gone.
So, 400 are empty?
Yeah.
And what about our jail? I mean, we always hear about overoccupancy. Is that an option for us?
I don't think that's an issue right now.
Yeah, I think that you're going to find-
I know that goes up and down, Terry.
That's another issue, Terry, is, that's a good question. Inmate populations around the state are down, and so, it is something that we may have to look at in the future, so what we do could affect the per diem, and Marcus has, has been familiar with it. We've talked about it before.
Now, our jail has a occupancy that was built for 1350, I believe, something like that, and I presented it every day about 16. I thought one time it was 1,900.
Yeah, I think they, they do two things. One, there's this occupancy, and I think it's something like 900, but then you can double bunk so many beds, and you're right, I think that it's much more than the 900. At the, the height, maybe back in 2006, they were close to 1,900 in there, and I think that they've been closer to that, that 1,500 number that you, you just said.
As far as having served on the regional jail board and its term in the past, that's those ICE inmates, you know?
ICE, you're right.
ICE inmates, it helped them with, what they call a rate stabilization. They put that money in the savings, and something would arise. But I would imagine that when they, if they bring those, those immigrants, inmates back, the localities are going to be fighting for that, because at one time, McCain was fighting to get, you know, some of those, because it's, it's good money, you know?
Well, you know, that, and I think that they're not, from the sheriffs that were there, that wasn't an issue. I will say that there was even a discussion, it came out at the meeting as to whether or not they should try to get federal inmates, meaning marshals inmates, that were under local charges. But that really is something that won't happen, because our local jails do receive some of those, and frankly, all those numbers are down.
Oh, that's good.
The jail has 1,465 people today.
Today.
So, I'm sorry, to express my ignorance.
No, that's all right.
Who goes, who typically is sent to the regional jail?
The sickest of the sick.
Right.
So, is it the long-term, or the-
No, people that, it certainly, almost serves as a hospital. You know, those, those inmates who are very ill or need, you know, medical treatment, they're the ones that localities send to the regional jail.
What about mental illness?
I'm not sure about that.
But don't they have a larger female population too, because they have to be segregated?
And they have a birthing, they have a birthing facility or something too, don't they? They have the ability to, for pregnant inmates.
Yeah, it's a hospital.
Yeah.
One of the, if you look at the pods as you walk in, one of the pods is basically a hospital pod. It's, it is like being in a hospital facility. I mean, it's, they even have dialysis that goes on within the facility itself, which is, instead of putting, and they do, and I, the day, one of the days I was there, we had, the dialysis was running, you had, you had people in the chair and other than waiting to go.
Several communities went into this arrangement years ago, because the state agreed to pay a higher percentage, I think, of the construction costs if you could get regional facilities built. And it was, I mean, it was good for us for a long time, and maybe someday it will be good again, but it's, I think we have some excess beds now. But it's, as a heads up, it could affect us. All right. Thank you. Mr. Riddick, anything?
Yeah, I've got a few things. Number one, this is in Mr. Burford's ward. Marn Avenue from Lafayette Boulevard to Pershing has to be the worst street to sit in Norfolk, and it's just, it's just unreal. I go through a dry cleaning in that area, and it's just unreal, and that, that this street has been neglected. I mean, it just looks, you talk about potholes, it just looks awful.
You talking about behind the cleaners of Lafayette?
Actually, when you go in, there's a, there's a restaurant on the corner, it's fast food restaurant, Manny's Burgers, something like that. That part of Marn, from Lafayette to Pershing, is no excuse for it to look like that.
We went out there, took James, and we took Public Works, and took everybody out there, and, James, James.
Right here, it's behind you.
Hey, you know, we went out there, that's the street we were, we were working on. You might want to get an update to Mr. Riddick as it relates to that, but we've been trying, we've been dealing with some other issues, you know, trying to deal with the, the element, the social issues as well, so we-
Maybe that might make them feel better, residents, you know, because of how it looks.
Yeah, we have, and, so we, it is on the radar.
Yeah. And I've been talking to Mr. Kiper about Johnson Avenue, that's in pretty bad shape from Prosa up to Church Street. You know, we, a few months ago, we were talking about the gun violence that we have, you know, around here, and it looks like it's going from, you know, one city to another, and, and I'm wondering at what point does the FBI come in and, and look at the entire region and find out where these guns are coming from? I was talking to a young fellow the other day, and he said, "13 years old, these kids got guns," you know? And I was wondering, one of the things, you know, a few years ago, we changed our requirements to, of having to get a gun permit through the city of Norfolk and just let the state and federal, you know, look at the person's background to determine. And I'm wondering if we put ours back in a place where we made it a requirement to come through the city to have a gun permit, as opposed to letting the federal background check be the only evaluation, would that do anything to slow it down? That's something that I guess we can talk about, and Marcus, you could give us an idea on it. The other thing, the final thing is, last week, I asked Mr. Pishko the process of impaneling a grand jury. You know, we had this shooting at Wells Fargo, and it's in the Commonwealth attorney's hands, and we don't know anything about it. Commonwealth attorney's offices are political offices tied to the city, and I just don't feel comfortable with what the results might be, and we still won't know anything. And so, you know, and, and I understand that the only person who can impanel is, is the Circuit Court Judge or the Attorney General, and I would imagine the Circuit Court Judge would have to determine whether they, there was some value in it. But I just wanted to say that I just don't have the confidence that I should have in what the results might be, you know, nothing about it, and so, I just want to put that on the record.
Well, the prosecutor can go any other Wednesday and go to the grand jury. There's a difference in the type of grand jury that you're talking about, that investigative type grand jury. That's, that's not what you would have here. This is-
And he's doing his due diligence, he's investigating, he's trying to reach his, he, he will tell us whether he thinks the course was justified, or whether, and then, then beyond that, then he'll, if he decides that it, that it's not justified, then he has a full range of options.
Yeah, I think that he, but he doesn't, and I think, and Paul is correct in certain instances, however, grand juries normally sit in Norfolk, it's like every other Wednesday, and the Commonwealth attorney can, once they have prepared their case, and they're, they can take it to the grand jury, and that grand jury's sitting and hears any of those cases, those felony cases that comes through. It's there, that grand jury is sitting, and it, then it's the next one, two weeks later. So, he's not going to impanel anything special at this point. It's any crime, and this would be considered any crime, that he can take it for them. And I understand where you're coming from, and I, and I, I can see where, especially the issues we've had recently at council, how that comes out. I think at this point, grand juries do sit in secret. Sometimes true bills come out, sometimes they don't come out, and who knows what the Commonwealth attorney will do in this case? He may decide to take it to the grand jury, not say anything, come out with a true bill, and the next thing you know, you have a case that is charged. So, it's very possible that he did give it to the citizens that way. I think right now, and I've thought about this, is that we have to at least let the process move on, let them get, you know, the police have given their evidence over. I think he asked for more forensics, if I'm correct, and see, perhaps, he will decide at that point in the process whether or not he takes it over and asks for an indictment or not. But I don't think he needs to do any, and there is certain precedent in the past. I remember Jack Doyle, when he was Commonwealth attorney, Jack had taken a case to grand jury.
That's right.
And it wasn't a special grand jury, I think he just took it to the regular impaneled grand jury, and they came back no true bill.
Exactly.
And, but I don't think you announce it ahead of time, because then you may be tainting your grand jury. It may be best, at this point, we're this far along in the procedure, find out where, where the Commonwealth attorney takes it. He's got some, and he's got some very good lawyers over there, and I think that we just got to hope that the political process doesn't come into play, and that way, justice really does come out. But you've got a great point, a great point on that. So, I think we got a little bit of time to see where he goes.
Couple things. I'd like to get an update. I know there's a lot going on with the expanded Hamburg partnership, and this group of business people.
Hamburg Partnership, by the way, is sold.
Right.
As of next week, I think it's going to, it'll be gone.
But where?
So, if you get a fee, somebody wants you to pay it to a membership, don't pay it.
Yeah, we have a group of business, business people working to try to make it all, working together more effective, and can we get an update on how they, where we're headed, or are we too early to, you know, I know they disbanded that, and, you know, they got, we got the Hamburg Economic Development Committee, which may or may not be effective. I'd like to take a look, but I don't want to get in the way of, if this is some master plan that, that we're all, all the cities are working together.
I don't, Barkley, I don't think there's a master plan at all. I, I think there was a sense that the Hamburg Partnership has sort of lived, and, you know, it's, I mean, it's sort of run its course.
Right.
What people hoped that, you know, that like the head of Newper New Ship and Colonial Williamsburg and Norfolk Southern and those, Centerra, those people would come to meetings every day, every week. They stopped coming. The, you know, the head of Women Mary and PBMS, all those people stopped coming. So, I mean, there was a sense that, that somebody else could maybe come up with a, with a better strategy.
There's no, there's no endgame for that.
No, they're, no, that's, I mean, it, it's dissolved. In fact, we, a lot of the mayors of all have resigned from the board, which had happened in order for the bylaws, I mean, for the corporation to come around. This group of businessmen is completely out there by them, by themselves doing, I mean, they're not affiliated with, with any of the cities. There's no city membership, there's no city dues, there's nothing, no city anything.
Okay. Well, I didn't want to, something, but based on that, I would like to look into the Hamburg Economic Development, how we fit into that, and whether it is in fact benefiting us, and whether our money is well-spent, and I know that, I'd like to look at some results and analyze, and, and also, you know, we talked during budget about indexing real estate tax, and maybe at the retreat, we could have, spend a little time, pros and cons, of whether or not we index that. Just, you know, all right. The third thing is, a couple of senior citizens have asked me about that, this is really an answering question, of whether we could structure so that they could pay monthly their taxes, so that-
I got, I am, I'm going to speak to that, but we talk about the senior, since we got senior tax relief.
And I hate quarterly with the big number and not have any penalty on them, and they're starting.
Or give them that.
But I think they're on tight budgets, and when you get a big number, throws them off. I guess that's all I'll leave, that's all I've got.
I mentioned when we had the nice report on Nauticus and the cruise terminal, that I'd like to, a report done on what actually the finances are of the cruise terminal. I thought that the report was great, but it certainly didn't have the detail that I think we deserve, and I'd like, again, to ask that that be brought to council. Secondly, I've talked to the city manager, and Andy, and a few of you others, I think, have been approached. Many of you are perhaps aware of this movement for what's called Ban the Box, and that is a movement to remove a box that is on the initial application, saying whether or not an applicant has had a felony. I think we all know that many of our citizens, in the vast predominance of those, are African American, have had felonies that were relatively small events, perhaps a long time ago, but the box often immediately removes them from consideration for the job. This does not mean that you wouldn't still acquire that, that an applicant has a felony. That certainly would be part of the job application and, and that process, but it would keep applicants from being initially removed from that consideration. And I've talked with Marcus, and apparently, we have the box, but we don't necessarily use it for whether or not we decide to further the applicant. So, my thought was that if we don't use it, I'm not sure why we have one. So, I, I'd really like council to consider this as a city.
I agree.
I, I really think it's a, it would be very helpful for a city. And then lastly-
By the way, I've mentioned that in here about three times, banning the box in here on a, over time.
And I think in a lot of places that have done that, the only time it comes in the place is a public safety job.
Sure. Yeah, and like I said, at no point would that not be part of the interview, to know about those felonies, but it would allow somebody that has some skills and talents to get through that.
Initial review, if somebody's checked the felony box, they probably don't get interviewed.
Right.
And if you take that box away, and then they get interviewed, and during the interview process, you can ask them, and they will tell me about it. Well, you know, you know, if it's a nonviolent offense, if it was something, you know, then I'm over with it, Terry. I think it helps people, it's a second chance.
And then, lastly, of course, I'm not pointing any names, but Anthony and Paul were supposed to look at- to look at our task force and our committee process, I believe in September of 2012. I know I missed a couple of meetings and so...
More speed. It's only 20.
But anyway, more importantly, I'm not sure what's happened to our committee structure. I mean, I haven't had a committee meeting in a very long time and I know Christine was also going to be looking at that. But I'd like to know, as a, I think as a council, we need to discuss what our structure's going to be, what our procedure will be for bringing things to agenda and what we as a council decide is important and we want to pursue. And if we're, it's not going to be through the committee, then we need to know some way that this legislative, legislative process can be facilitated. So, I don't know how you all want to do that.
How we do our business is really important, not only what we do, but would it be okay if we, if we talked about it at retreat? Would that be...
Does this mean we'd have no more committee meetings until September?
Well, actually, we sort of, I mean, we had...
Kind of done anywhere.
We already done one last week. In July, we would have one.
Well, I was...
What we did was, I thought we all decided...
Most are free day.
Yeah, I thought in the end, afterwards, we were kind of all going to be there.
We were all going to be...
Right. But we haven't had a...
I was gonna, I was gonna bring it up too. What I was gonna suggest, like today, our committee meeting got canceled, but if the four original committee members still wanted to get together and use that time to develop possible presentations, we should at least have that opportunity, I guess, to use that time to discuss things. It doesn't have to be the full council, but we still kind of have the four originals and then we open it up to everybody.
Could we discuss this next week? How about that? So, we can all, you know, instead of, because it's nearly six, but we can, we'll get that on the agenda for next week.
And then next week, we're doing appointments or appointments?
Yes.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you.
And we'll do committee structure then too.
Couple of things. The, talking about light rail, the trains are pretty clean. They're truly maintained well, but the shelters are not. Was that that shelter today, the one in Monticello? It ain't really need to have someone power washing and cleaning those areas. I mean, that makes a, that's one of our more prominent stops there in terms of people going to scope Chrysler Hall or whatever. And it just doesn't speak well for us as a city, getting off the train today, looking at the surface and then the covered area shelter itself. They really need to have someone come out there late in the evening and, you know, clean those on a daily basis or at least every two days or so. You know, I know we're going to have this conversation today, but in wearing two hats, one of my, well, a couple of my constituents called me as relates to the process that has taken place with the senior tax relief. I got, you know, a young lady, 85 years old, her and her husband, he's 89, she's 85, had been on this program for quite some time. And, you know, and I don't know who they're dealing with over there, but this is not a way of fact program. And so, we should treat this program with the dignity that it so deserves and treat our citizens with the dignity that they so deserve. And oftentimes, when you're dealing with senior citizens, you know, of an age, I think we need to be very sensitive in our efforts in dealing with them. Someone brings in an application and they tell you drop it in the box and then you call them and tell them that, or send them back the application and highlighting areas and say they didn't fill that out. It should have been reviewed. If they took the time to go into the place where they're accepting the applications, they should have taken the time to review to make sure that the person filled out everything. In this particular case here, she, they sent the application back to her on and forth. She reviewed it, made the, filled out the areas that she needed to fill out, put it back in the mail that very day. She called me. She made a copy at the, at the place where she was there, gave her a copy of the application back and she let them keep the one, they told her, put it in the box, didn't have time to talk to her. On the sixth, she received a letter. At the program, you had to have everything in by June 1st. The program, again, she received the letter back, I mean, on the sixth, saying that because she didn't acquiesce in the allotted time, that she would be denied senior tax relief this year. That is unacceptable. I mean, the mere fact that we are going to a deferral system is one thing. And the mere fact that we, we did some other things, we tweaked the program in some other ways. But no one should be disenfranchised by this program if they submitted their, their application in the time that we've asked them to do so. And especially if they're walking into these, these various places. And I met with you, Sabrina and the gentlemen, about other situations alike this. And I just think that, you know, because we're moving to a new system that's challenging in itself and because we have limited dollars, I still think that we have a fiduciary responsibility to our citizens to make sure that we give them the best service, best information in terms of trying to qualify for the program. Because we can't have what we had last year, when we had over 100 folk who missed out and...
Sure.
And I thank you for, you know, for working with them to be able to get these, about 80-some of these individuals back into the program. So, I'm really concerned and like Barclay said earlier, we've, I know that we're going to have an abundance of seniors who are getting, the persons that are getting 100% will be fine, but they won't know until, I think, the second week of July, what they qualify for. So, what we started doing in office, and I had to check state code to make sure we can do this, but what we're doing is setting up Barclay, a payment plan that, we're doing it manually. I got the, we got it in our system to do it, flag it, send a bill and allow people 10 months to be able to pay, if they have $200 a quarter, $800, they can pay that monthly with no P and I, no P and I, and to help some of these seniors out. So, we're going to start doing that. So, we're doing, we're going to have two meetings in July and two meetings in August around the city, targeting senior citizens, so we can roll out this program to help these seniors who can't pay the full amount each quarter.
If they don't, seniors sometimes don't get, get the word or are not able to get out. Are you gonna, we gonna send them some with their first bill and say...
That's why we're trying to get out and see as many of them as we possibly can. I'm gonna get with Bob Batchery and his staff to reach out, get with the...
That gonna be anybody over 65?
Well, they, they'll know what they qualify for. If a person is 100%, they're fine, but if they're not 100%, 80%, 60%, 50%, well, these people, hopefully, we could, we could get to them and let them know where the meeting is going to be. And I got a date of June 5th.
I mean, just because they're not in the program, it's still some...
Well, they, they'd be, they'd be to come in, but as long as I may, like I said, we can work with them as long as, put them on 10 months, as long as we have every dime in by June 5th, we're good.
Well, if they need to start paying in July, really, we pay back, right?
If they, if, well, if you got a person who knows now, July 1, they could, we could work with them, do 12 months. But most people in the program will know the second week of July, bill goes out September, so we're going to put them on for 10 months.
Anybody, are you saying just people that were or have been in the program, or you're saying anyone who's a senior citizen over 65 can opt into this payment program?
No, but I don't want to be that...
Yeah, I think that would be a different question if you're asking to set up a differential treatment.
I mean, there's something on the line.
If a person, if a person came in, Barclay, a person came in and they had a difficult time paying their tax, we can work with them. But I'm not, what we've tried to do is open it up to these seniors because this is a new program and I've seen already an abundance of individuals who will, who qualify for 100% in the past, probably won't qualify for 100% now, who will need some type of help. So, what we're saying is, when we roll this out, if a person comes in and they got a hardship, not that they just don't want to pay it off, but if they got a hardship and they need help, okay, and they were directed...
Anybody who's a senior could do that, whether they were in the program or know how.
Right. That's what I'm saying.
I think you ought to make that, but not everybody. There are people that are just above and never been in it, might as well reach out to the boss.
Well, we'll do that back, yeah. Okay. That's all I have.
All right. Angela?
I, I appreciate what the church office is doing with regard to senior citizen tax relief. I just want to renew my objection for the record to the whole change in the plan with senior citizen tax relief. I think it was a bad idea then and I think it's a bad idea now. As for July 5th, I do favor July 5th, letting our employees take that day off. July 4th is a Thursday, they'll be off. A lot of people are taking probably July 5th off anyway, so it'll probably be a skeleton crew here, so why make the skeletons work? So, we should just go ahead and give them that day off. I think it would be good for them. It would be good for them to spend some time with their families and it would be a good gesture for the city to do that. The last...
I should not let my employees know.
How much does it cost the city without that?
Marcus said it was a minimal cost to the city for us to let them off on July 5th, so...
I don't know what minimal means. I mean, I've got office appointments here Friday. I mean, I'm, I'm working in my office.
You have the key to the city.
I don't have the key to the city. If that's, that's, I mean, I...
And two additions that we're recommending for poverty commission resumes, handing out so you guys can add it to your commission books for next week. It's Sandra Brand and Sharon S. Riley. And that's it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, can I say something about that? I mean, I, I am in favor of adding both of these people. Okay? But we had a fairly, we had a good discussion about who should be represented on this commission and I would hope that we, that we end any additions to the, to the commission because we wanted to have a very select group. These two people fit that, that bill. I just would not, I mean, some people will come forward and volunteer to serve on it and some people, I mean, good people will, who want to get involved. We had a very select group that Brack did a good deal of research on about, you know, who should and shouldn't be. These people qualify. I would just like to hold that commission at that limit, at that number. And I'm a fan of both of those folks, let me say.
I just ask, do we have somebody else? Is somebody on that commission, somebody who lives in poverty?
I think we had that discussion.
We have, I think, a representative of resident, oh, NRHA, I think.
Yes.
Yes. I can't remember. I think we do.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before it comes to this, I respect your, your position on the senior tax relief program. But one of the things I, I wish the manager and his staff, his PR people, they had an article in the Virginia Pilot that really made the, made us look like we doing something to the detriment opposed to trying to help. What most people don't understand is that if we hadn't taken those measures, we probably wouldn't have the program. Program wouldn't have lasted but so much longer because we couldn't afford the program anymore. And if you understand the, what that 4.7, it almost, it, the money that we were spending and you look at the federal money that we had to put aside for the veterans, we're mandated to do, I think it was almost like a 4.7 tax increase. I believe that it was equivalent to that. But I do know this, if we hadn't done anything, we wouldn't be able to serve the many seniors that were, were able to do so because the program was in trouble. And I, and I just wish that we would articulate that when we talk to the media because we had no choice. I mean, you said, well, we, we, we could have left it alone, but the reality, if we had left it alone, we wouldn't have been able to serve as many seniors as we've been serving. And the people who most need the program wouldn't have, wouldn't have been able to access the program. And I think we'd have got many more calls. Is it perfect? No, but we have time to go back and look and continue to work on it. But I, I think that, you know, in doing, at least getting through this year, we'll at least be able to impact and help more seniors. We'll get a good gauge on how many people, I think we'll get some people to drop off, but I truly don't want to disenfranchise those individuals who truly need this program, who are living paycheck to paycheck, or I want to say paycheck to paycheck, that have lost a spouse and have limited resources coming into their household, who really needs this program. I see them, I talk to them every day and I have to tell them that, that, you know, it's not the best situation, but at the end of the day, we're trying to help as many people as we possibly can. And we're most, and you look around at the other municipalities, I think we have one of the most generous senior tax relief programs in the area, you know, and that's something we have to talk about.
Did you say state?
Well, in the state, but we need to look at that. That, those are, to me, those are important key points that we need to articulate to, to the citizens of the city, you know, in terms of what this costs to be able to deliver this, this, this service or this benefit.
Almost everybody covered some of the items I wanted to discuss, but I want to reiterate a few things. One, I agree with Councilman Progiro and Councilwoman Williams about letting our employees have a day off. And I understand the mayor has appointments, but maybe you can come in, let him in on that day.
Somebody has a key to the city.
Especially if other localities are doing it, maybe that's something to look at next year's calendar when we have a holiday that falls on a Thursday like that, that we just go ahead and build it. That way, you don't have to hear it from us.
I'll check on Christmas for you.
Because you know the employees are lobbying us. That's what they...
I'll check on Christmas for you next week.
From their private emails. The, just real quickly about the senior tax relief. I spoke to a group of senior citizens last week. I was invited to a luncheon and I, there weren't too many complaints about the deferral program itself. It was more about customer service. I have to agree with Anthony. Quite a few seniors were disappointed that they couldn't actually ever talk to anybody. Every time they called, either the line rang or it was busy. And I don't know if that was just how it was set up and serviced. There were some comments made about employees being kind of rude to them, a little bit different than the service that they had received prior to the city taking it over. So, they were able to do the compare and contrast type with that and that's the feedback that we're getting. And with the other part of it, the emotional part, the transition and changes, and then I think that also hyped up some of the sensitivity with some of our seniors. And so, we really need to be on this, even if they're seniors now that are figuring out that they missed the deadline, we need to make sure that we're, you know, talking to them like they're human beings. And I think it was, it was kind of hard standing up there as a council person who's not responsible for the administration of this and getting that kind of feedback and all I could say is I'll bring it up at a council meeting. And there were some individual things that brought to city's attention that was taken care of. Just I want to thank ARPOS and Public Works. I've sent some individual things. They're doing a great job. I've been hammering them. I said, "Tis the season" this morning to email to Daryl about an issue that came up.
ARPOS is for the record.
Records and Parks and Open Space. And yes, I drove last week, went on a little family vacation, nine hours to being into New York and drove through many towns and cities. And when you look at the condition of some of those towns and cities and what they're going through, you really begin to appreciate the work that we do here in Norfolk. I think more of our citizens probably need to get out and see what's going on in some of those towns, whether it's median upkeep or code issues. I think we work hard in Norfolk. We can always do better, we know that, but I just appreciate our staff and what they do even more, which is why they need July 5th off.
Because those other jurisdictions have July 5th off.
That's right, man, that's right. Um, just, uh, somebody went down Pleasant Avenue in East Ocean View and tagged, uh, they went from 21st Street all the way down to 7th Bay, and believe it or not, citizens, nobody called it in. And, um, then I finally got a person who called me and said, "Can you do something about it?" They had tagged stop signs, they tagged private property, um, with tons of graffiti. The city went out and took care of their property. Um, I received some feedback from a citizen whose wooden fence had been tagged. And while the city staff was out there, um, cleaning up the stop signs, they asked if they could get some assistance with the graffiti because they didn't know how to release it, get it off the fence. And they, the response that came back was a little bit negative, and the citizen was just wondering, you know, it is their property, private property, but is there a way that the city could assist with this, especially when it was as much as it was? It wasn't a little, you know, thing on the fence, it was the whole fence. Um, there are still some private boarded-up properties that have graffiti on it, and I know that there's a process that you have to contact the property owner, but I just, to keep the area looking clean, if the city's out there doing this, if there's an easier way that they could help, particularly when it was as bad as it was, it wasn't small things. And I'm just wondering if part of neighbors building neighborhoods, if there's a way that we can address that better in the future when we have something like that. Also, the citizens had, uh, that I just recently talked to, had discussed about the cameras on Pleasant Avenue, and why the police haven't looked into using the cameras. The response they got back from one of the police officers was, well, nobody's looking at the cameras, and nobody's going to go there and review the footage, um, because it would, it happened a week ago. You know, we have those cameras up there. Um, I disagreed at the time about putting them up when I was a Civic League member, that I thought it was giving false, um, you know, hope to citizens there that would bring safety. If they're there and we're not using them, I, I don't know why we're keeping them up. And I think I've heard some feedback in Demby Park, um, they have cameras too, and Terry, I don't know if they tell you the same thing. Is anybody looking at them? Why do we have them up? Uh, and then finally, finally, the PPEA, um, I just want to make sure, there's some documents that the state has put out about best practices when it comes to this. Have we reviewed those documents? It, it goes a lot further than our own ordinance. Um, our ordinances are very specific, but there's some other things in there about, um, when you award the contract, making sure that they're friendly to, um, the contractors that they hire, or things like that. Has that been reviewed?
Well, many of us that are associated with it have experience with reviewing PPEAs. So the, the most important thing, and so thank you for bringing it up, Councilman Spiegel, you, we, you do have an ordinance tonight that's a cleanup.
Right.
And I think that there was a message that, that was sent out. But as we discussed last time, this first, um, component is just reviewing the PPA to see whether or not we want to receive it. Um, and after that point, you're exactly right, there's so many things that you can do with the PPEA that isn't available to us just in the low bid environment. So we'll make sure that we take into account all of the best practices.
Yeah, I just want, you know, if we're reaching that point and for future, um, issues, you know, setting precedents, if that's where they happen again, just making sure that we've got it all ready to go.
Sure.
That's it.
One more thing. Marcus, just in, you know, talking to, listening to you and listening to Anthony, and in some of the task force meetings that we've had, Marcus, we have got to let our staff know that there is no excuse for being rude to citizens. And I say old people with love, there is absolutely no excuse for being rude to old people. There's none.
Sure.
You know, they do a good job, and I love, I love our city employees. You know, we go in, we go in the back for them for June, July the 5th, but, you know, there's no-
Back down on that.
There is absolutely no excuse, because sometimes those people that are out in the field, they're the only, that's the only person that our citizens may have ever come in contact with the city of Norfolk, and they leave with a bad taste in their mouth. And there is no excuse-
Right.
-for being rude to our citizens, and none for being rude to old people.
I, I agree 100%. I, I would hope that, um, the feedback I received tonight is, um, maybe one part of the story, or at least anomalies, I can, I go to bat for these employees, that that's not the way that we work with the residents or the, our neighbors as citizens. So, um, I'm hearing these anomalies, there's no excuse there, but I can assure you that that is not the fabric of this, this organization.
Um, I think three things here. First of all, in fairness to those of you who would like to, um, close the, you know, the city on Friday following July 4th, I don't think the manager has the, um, power to do that. It needs an ordinance. So, um, why don't we get Brack to at least prepare the ordinance walking on tonight so we can vote it up or down tonight? I do think there's a difference between, but I'm, I'm actually closing my own law firm on the, on that day. But I, this is public service, and, um, sometimes you expect, well, I don't remember ever closing City Hall on an extra day, except right around the Christmas holidays. I don't know that we've ever closed it any other time, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't on this day necessarily. I'm not persuaded that we should, but, but there may be five people who want to do it. If you want to do it, we need to vote on it. Uh, and we, we need to do it Friday tonight to give our employees enough notice to know that, you know, they're gonna, they can, they can take off in 10 days or something like that, okay? So we'll just can, I'm going to get Brack to go draw the ordinance, okay? Secondly, um, there was some notice in the paper about this, not as much in the paper as, uh, as it was maybe in the daily press, but the fact that the region unanimously voted at the Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization to declare the third crossing as the preferred alternative for the new crossing, or the widened crossing of, um, the harbor, was a significant step in, in a direction, in a positive direction for us and for the regional economy and for regional mobility. Um, the environmental impact statement that was, um, done, that was, that was performed just recently, the update to the old statement demonstrated something like 150 acres in Willoughby alone that would be under some form of, of impact, whether it's wetlands or air pollution or noise, or, I mean, but for some reason, for years, the, the group has just, has wanted to widen the bridge home. And they finally saw the logic in creating a new corridor. Um, it will help not only Willoughby and all the people trying to run down the road there, but also in the future, someday, take lots of trucks off Hampton Old Park, which is very important to our community as well, and it supports the support and the Navy. So, by having said that, I want to thank the manager and the staff for all the work they did in trying to persuade their counterparts across the region for, to, to persuade their, you know, their folks in their cities to support something like this. Molly Ward from Hampton did a nice job. She chairs the group, and she finally, they finally realized in Hampton, it did a lot of environmental damage to Hampton. It was like, as she said, doing a Berlin Wall right down the middle. So, that's a big step. I, I can't remember a more important, uh, transportation decision, road decision around here a long time, and hopefully that will last for another 20 years. Um, and then finally, just because, I mean, Paul mentioned that he wanted to go on record about, uh, the, uh, I don't know how you characterize it, happened, the incident at Los Vargas Center. I just, I need to go on the record too then and say that, that I do believe in the process. And, uh, and I do believe that the Conville Wealth Attorney, uh, his office will act appropriately and try to reach what they believe is a fair and just decision. That may take many shapes and many forms. I can't, you know, I can't begin to judge it, it may be, but I just need to, I wanted to say that I do. There's a process, and I believe in it, and I, and I expect it to work. Okay, um, Mr. Manager?
Can we really, Chris, look at this lawsuit, this is, we don't need to do anything, right?
Uh, no, that, uh, we anticipate being able to handle that summarily, and if it turns out that we do need your participation, we'll contact you.
How does today, how does the ruling in the Supreme Court, it seems like the, the ruling in the Supreme Court makes this a non-issue?
Um, it, it, it's a different aspect of the Voting Rights Act.
Okay.
This is not, this, this was not included.
Okay.
Yeah.
The Senate and Congress.
You better keep that, come back and do it.
Something I'm going to tell them.
Out of the way.
Yes.
The lips and Williamsburg is predicting voting rights, stamp.
Oh.
Yes, that's how they're telling them.
Come back with some of these stuff.
Okay.
Thank you.
Blackwood, in a, in a sense, as I said, in, 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 this, so.
Oh, Jesus, we're going to sleep, man. Mayor and members of council, we have four discussions for you, so we're going to try our best to expedite the, uh, the first couple. I know that there's a desire to have an action on the chickens discussion from last week. So with the financial policies, I'll just do a quick lead in. Um, we have, I, I think it's very important to first, again by saying that we have strong ratings in the city, and bond rating, bond ratings, and we would always like to get those stronger. We've been discussing financial policies since at least 2006, and we could go back to 2000 when there was actually a resolution passed by the council that established some of these financial policies. There are sprinkled between that resolution, there's some that are in the budget document that's approved each year. But, um, now basically what we're trying to do tonight is take some policies, well, let me say, some goals that have not been formalized and formalize them. But the, what we're also trying to do is make sure that they're realistic. What the rating agencies are concerned about is not only that you have these financial policies, but if you, for whatever reason, break through them, how do you get back into compliance? So, uh, I can recall back when Steve Demick, I believe, stood in front of the council with two, I think, 70-page presentations over time, and, uh, financial policies are not something that, I guess, gets people very excited about having discussions. So, Sabrina's going to talk a bit about the financial policies. The, um, the big deal for us here is to try to make sure that we can weather the storm whenever the storm occurs, and sometimes Councilman Moon will say he's not sure that the storm is ever over. Um, what's extremely important here is that, as Sabrina discusses, the financial policies, one of the things that happened between 2000 and 2006, and even today, is that no one ever thought that we would have four consecutive years of negative growth or declines in residential real estate. So, no matter what the plans were in the past, that is something that we had never experienced before. So that has put us in a, in a very different situation. So, in this discussion tonight, it's, uh, hopefully realistic financial policies, policies that will end up with the council voting on a resolution, so that when we go to the rating agencies this September, we will have something formalized that we have not had.
Thank you. Good evening. Um, back in, I believe it was last September, when we went to the retreat, we gave you this big book which had, uh, financial policies in there. And it had about 14 areas that we were going to try and look at and establish policies for. Well, that was a pretty lofty goal. Um, and we looked at it, and we said, well, we're still coming out of the recession, it's still stagnant recovery, it's, it's slow, and some of these goals, while we might want to achieve them, it's just not, it's just not possible. Um, so we tailored it down. Back in February, we said we were going to concentrate on maybe three areas, three or four areas. One was our reserves, structurally balanced budget, our debt management policy, and also our parking fund policy, which also leads into our enterprise funds policy. So that's what we're going to talk about, are just those bottom four bullets today. And as the manager said, it's not about just having policies. While we have policies, you, the former council passed policies back in 2000, but it's what we do with the policies when we break through them or when we don't adhere to them. That's what the credit agencies are looking for, is do we have a financial plan, and how are we managing through our stressful times? So one of the focus areas is our structural balance. And we'll cover a little bit of these, and I'll try not to put you to sleep, because this, this can be kind of dry stuff. But it is very important, and what we do in terms of establishing our financial policies and good management practices signals to the investor world that we are well managed, and they should invest in us, and that we do deserve the credit rating that we have. Actually, we probably, we'd like a better credit rating, but we've got a pretty good one right now. So when we looked at, um, good financial practices throughout the nation, um, we've highlighted some of them for you in the next couple of slides. We said structural balance, of course, uh, reserve policies, multi-year financial forecasting, prioritize spending plans, a policy regarding non-recurring revenues. And some of these I'm going to get into a little bit more, so I'm going to go pretty fast here. Debt affordability reviews and pay-as-you-go capital funding. Some of the other ones are also, how fast do we retire our debt? Do we produce a five-year capital plan? Do we receive financial and budget reporting awards? Um, do we, are we in compliance with GASB standards? That's your Governmental Accounting Standards Board. And do we have a well and coordinated economic development strategy? Believe it or not, we actually do. Uh, back in 2000, the council passed a resolution with the Economic Development Strategy. It is quite lengthy, and, and at some point, we're also going to review that and probably bring that back to you for revision. So when we looked at the best practices and said, what do we do well, and what do we need to improve on, and what do the rating agencies put more weight on and more significance on? The fund balance reserve policies is a very significant indicator of our financial health. Do we do it? So there are three columns there. Left side indicates the practice, the middle column indicates the value that the rating agencies place or investors place, and Norfolk's current practice. So we have check marks and exclamation points in the third column. Check marks mean that we do do it, but we need to strengthen them. We do some of it, but we can, we can strengthen those areas. The exclamation marks actually mean that we do them quite well. We're, we're okay. So fund balance reserve policies, again, we have some, but we need to strengthen them, and we need to establish a framework of what we do when we blow through them. Debt affordability reviews and policies, again, we have them, we, same thing, we need to strengthen them. Debt disclosure practices, we're pretty, we're pretty well off in that. We, we disclose everything. Um, multi-year financial forecasting, we come to you every January and give you a five-year financial plan, and that's when you see the budget gaps growing each year. Um, that's our mid-year financial forecasting. We do regular financial reporting, but can we do it better? Absolutely, we can. Pay-as-you-go capital funding, that's how much cash do we put towards our capital projects? We used to put a lot more in, but with the recession, we have not been able to put as much as we'd like to put in. And so our debt goes up when we don't put in as much cash. And that's one of the areas we need to concentrate on. Debt, rapid debt requirement, uh, retirement, how fast do we retire our 20 and 30-year debt? Uh, the standard is, I mean, the gold standard is about 65% that we should be retiring. We used to be about 64% in 2008. We are now, I, we're less. It's projected to go, go less, because what we have tried to do is manage through this time period when our debt service has gone up, and the larger projects are going through our system. So we're not retiring it as quickly as we'd like to.
Sabrina, when you put the check marks there, those are the things that we need to work on. Is there any, or are you going to get to how those areas that we need to work on, how we compare with other cities?
Um, in some cases, yes, yes. If not, we will obviously get you that answer.
Okay.
Um, non-recurring revenues, that's about our structural balance again, and we'll get into that a little bit more. Five-year capital planning, that's that CIP section we give you every April, March, April in our, in the budget presentation. And financial and budget reporting awards, you know, geeks like us like to get these awards. It doesn't mean much to anybody else, but it means something to the investors that tells people that we are disclosing our practices. Our CAFER gets the Excellence Award in, from the Government Finance Officers Association. The budget document gets the Outstanding Distinguished Award. Those are the highest in each of the categories that we do get. Um, and actually, they told me not to say this, but I'm going to tell you. I went to a finance conference a couple of weeks ago, and I'm sitting there in San Francisco, looking at the screen on the budget document, and there comes on the screen is a, a, an example of a page from our budget document for all the people to see, and it had City of Norfolk up there as an example of a best practice. We had two pages in that presentation. So, like I said, geeks like us like those kinds of things.
Not geeks like us.
I'm sorry?
You're kidding.
I did.
Non-geeks like it did.
I actually- I actually texted the staff back and said, look at what you all did.
Lori, do you have a symbol you can put up?
So how do we compare with our ratings, our general obligation ratings? How does our three credit rating agencies look at us? Moody's, S&amp;P, and Fitch, we're pretty, we're classified as a highly rated issuer. And for Moody's, we're strong, S&amp;P, we're high, and Fitch, we're high. We are two notches away from AAA in Moody's and Fitch, and we're one notch away in, I'm sorry, Moody's and S&amp;P, and one notch away from Fitch. On the right-hand side, you have the comparisons of our local cities, and there are two cities. Virginia Beach is AAA in all three categories. City of Chesapeake is AAA for Fitch, and we are pretty comparable for the rest of our cities. We rank a little bit higher in some cases, and I think we're the highest. Rating agencies also look at some other things as we go through our review and we go for issuance. They have, all three, Moody's, S&amp;P, and Fitch have talked about our reserves, our policy on reserves, that's something that they are looking at, our return to structural balance, our compliance with our debt policies, the increase in our debt burden, and how are we managing our budgetary pressures as we move through this recession. They're also looking at our exposure to the federal funding and our income levels through, in relation to the rest of the nation. So those are things that they have commented on, and they are looking at us for that.
So Sabrina, the three rating agencies would be the equivalent to the three credit bureaus in where they collect their own information, they evaluate their own information, and they don't share? They just publish their?
They do share. We have a very good relationship with them.
Okay.
Yes. So moving on to the focus areas, the structural balance, and you've seen this, this was part of the city manager's message, is we will always present to you a balanced budget. Whether or not it's structurally balanced is another issue. The last few years, we have not been able to present to you a structurally balanced budget, and that's because we've had to make some tough choices, is do we use our one-time revenues and cut expenditures to the level where we have to lay off two hundred people? Again, back at that same finance conference, I listened to some of the localities and some of the draconian measures that they took. There are localities out there that have actually rolled back salaries. They have increased their real estate tax rates, they have furloughed employees, they have closed pools, they have closed libraries, and some of them still have not opened them back up. We have not, we've done some of that, but we have not rolled back salaries, we haven't furloughed anyone. It is, it's tough. It's tough to make those decisions, and I think what we have done in the past, at least three years since I've been back, is said, laying off people doesn't help anyone. It just hurts our economy even more because then you're lowering the purchasing power. So how do we keep our folks employed but at the same time raise our revenue? So again, not structurally balanced means that we are using our one-time revenues to support ongoing expenses such as salaries. And this is our five-year forecast. As you, as you see, last, this was presented to you February 2013, we are looking at a budget gap. Again, we will come to you and we will close that gap, but it may not be structurally balanced. It just, we have a bad period coming up in 2015 and 16, so we just need to manage through this. We're not out of the woods yet. So how do we achieve a structurally balanced budget? We think that we can do it within five years, but it's going to take some restraint on our spending, it's going to take some discretion on our part. We can do it through revenue growth, we can do it through expenditure reductions, we increase efficiencies, and we grow our, grow our economy. So reduce, one of the things that we need to do is reduce our reliance on the one-time revenues for ongoing expenditures. And that means it's a corresponding, we have to lower our expenditures at the same time. So what do we cut? Where do we look for efficiencies? And the budget that we presented to you before it ever got into your hands this past March, we'd already taken fifteen million out of it through reductions. So our executive departments, the departments in the past three years, and I tell Marcus this all the time, that we manage it, but we don't tell people how we manage it a lot of times. We just absorb it. And we've managed to cut our departments, our executive departments over the past three years. We've done mid-year reductions and also continuing reductions going into the upcoming years. So, yes, sir.
Sabrina, we have an operating budget, what about eight-hundred-and-twelve, eight-hundred-and-fifteen?
Eight-hundred-and-seventeen.
Eight-hundred-and-seventeen. How much of that was out of, was in one, his one-time funds this year?
We're looking at about at least nine-point-one million.
Okay. Out of an eight-hundred-and-seventeen-million-dollar budget, that equates to what?
A little over one percent.
Okay. That was the point, my point. I mean, I don't know how many communities in this worldwide, global economy downturn are, I mean, I agree with what you're saying, but I don't want the word to go out that somehow that this, that we're so, that we're really out of balance. We're like one percent out of balance almost, a little more than one percent.
The objective is to eventually...
That's a manageable figure.
It's, the objective is to eventually achieve a structural balance. That way, we know that we can continue our services.
You mentioned the capital piece. Our goal has always been, I think, to cash fund about ten percent of our capital budget, and where were we this year?
It's a little skewed because we have Camp Allen coming in, so while that's not our money...
Okay, and some of it was skewed with the Slover piece and all that.
Right.
But you're still able, for accounting purposes, to use that.
Correct.
Yes, sir. That's in the, okay, I just...
Going forward, it's, it's about six-hundred-thousand dollars that's ongoing cash contribution to the CIP.
So our policy focus areas, what we're saying in this is we achieve our structural balance. And again, we shouldn't, we should try not to use our surpluses to achieve structural balance. We'll never get there if we use our surpluses. In the past two or three years, we have forced surpluses. We've asked our departments to curtail their spending towards the end, because we knew we were going to have problems in the upcoming year, and we needed the money to carry forward. So as we move through our funding plan priorities, what we're saying is, as we achieve a surplus, a first order of business is to put money towards our capital projects, put more cash into the CIP, or fund our reserves. And let me get to that a little bit. What we have done with our reserve policies, again, we said that we were going to try and make them achievable. We don't want any unrealistic demands out there because then when we don't meet them, the rating agencies will, will look at that. So our reserves, as we've established this in the, in the far right-hand column, our unassigned general fund reserve policy is five percent. What we've done is, we're saying we're going to establish floors and caps, minimums and maximums. The minimum for the five percent reserve, well, unassigned general fund balance, we're saying it should be five percent. That's your minimum. Most localities go from anywhere from seven to fifteen percent. That's our bare minimum. We're there. We've met our floor. With the risk management reserve, we're saying our floor should be three million. Again, we're there. We're already at our minimum. So right now, we don't need to put money into either one of those two funds. Our economic downtown reserve, we're saying our floor should be three million. We're there. So at this current juncture, we do not need to put money into our reserves as long as we establish that minimum base. Now, when we move further, we say our, as I said, the risk management is three million, economic is three million. We say our cap should be about five million. The risk management, what we've done is we looked at our three years past history of average claims, plus what we do in unemployment, workers' compensation, and we said an additional two million would help. So our cap for that would be five million. The economic downturn, we looked at the past three years of real estate revenue, and that's about two-point-five, which equates to about another two million dollars for the economic downturn. And we're not establishing a cap for the unassigned general fund reserve. Again, we are at the, at the minimum for all of these. So if, going back to this, if we generate a surplus in this upcoming year, we can put money towards capital, and we can, if we so choose, we can put money towards the reserves. Sure.
Okay. Could you just go back two slides? One more. Go up one.
Which way?
The reserves, your pods, your three, your, okay, beforehand, the five, the economic downturn policy, which was never adopted, was ten million dollars. So when Sabrina said earlier, we would have policies that are realistic, we just don't believe it's realistic to have a policy that we put in front of you to adopt, to have a ten-million-dollar economic downturn goal. We also, the risk management was something like eleven-point-four, eleven-point-six million dollars. Again, we don't think that was realistic. I think that's why we struggled for years getting these adopted. So right now, what Sabrina said, for all three of these pods, you have met your minimum. And she's adding for two of the three, a maximum, if you will, that based on surpluses, you could add to it. So some of the things that caused us to push away from this years ago are addressed in those last three slides.
Marcus, on the risk management, is that self-insurance? Is that part of that aspect or self-insurance something different?
We will have. It's, it's over and above what we already have set aside. I believe we have set aside in two different pots close to seven million dollars. So this would be over and above what you have to play, to pay our claims and...
And property. You already have seven million?
Yes, sir.
And so this would be three million above that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, and so...
Part of that is workers' compensation.
Okay. Now, will a couple of serious events that we have found liable for, what would that do to us?
It would be difficult. I think the biggest claim that we've had in the last decade is like seven, seven-and-a-half million dollars. So assume that the seven or so million dollars that we have already set aside for claims that we spend it each year. So the first place that you would go beyond that would be this risk management pod, in which you have three million, and we're saying you would cap it out at five. So that would be the place to go, Mr. Councilman.
But you know, it's your respons, we come to you and we start, we sit at the table, and all of a sudden, money's being pushed around for political purposes. Both of you have to put your foot down and tell us, you know, this is going to affect us one way or another. I mean, just don't make us feel good when we're sitting here trying to, you know, as we're doing the budget time period. I mean, they gotta tell, you gotta tell us. Because for politics, you know, we want to make our, make everybody happy. And at some point, you gotta draw us back.
That's right.
And realistically, and tell us, this is not going to work. We can't do this, we can't do that, or this will, you know, make certain effects. I mean, it really isn't common on you to do that. And I, you know, this is, and you've done a great job with this presentation.
Have we invaded the economic downturn fund?
Before, yes. And you put, and you have put money back into it. At one point, as high as it was, four million.
Do you not see how we could, did we do it last year?
No, 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 sir. You, you put...
Regina did it, actually.
Yeah.
The what?
No, you didn't.
When the city manager...
You did.
We didn't take money out of it.
Oh, take money out. No, putting it back, you did.
I mean, that's what it was there for. I mean, you were in the teeth of this thing.
Right.
And that's when we were, you know, closing library hours and stuff.
One thing that we, we haven't, we haven't touched on, and you might be getting it towards the end, is our retirement fund, how we're funded there. Now, it's my understanding that we are not fully funded as far as our retirement fund is concerned, or am I confused?
No, sir. We're, we're not at a hundred percent. We're a little bit, as the last numbers that came out last year, we're a little bit north of eighty percent. But from a rating agency perspective, being north of eighty percent is, for lack of a better word, being in the ballgame. So, no, we're not at a hundred percent. We're a little north of eighty as for last year's numbers.
I know when the retirement board came in, they think that we should be a little stronger than the eighty percent. Last, last year, when Portsmouth was doing their budget, they, they issued bonds to fully fund their retirement fund, which a couple of people around this table thought was a bad idea, and I don't have an opinion on it. But I think that's something that we should be cognizant of, the fact that, you know, anything we can do to kind of close that gap would be great.
You know, the manager has made a commitment to the retirement board that we will fund their request.
He's sure that's the first guy he's ever, I think he took some money from somewhere.
Right.
Yeah. I remember that well.
So in order to do any of this, we have to generate a surplus. But we're also saying the surplus has to be at least one percent of the general fund budget. So for example, in 2014, our budget's eight-hundred-and-seventeen, but let's just round, eight-hundred-million-dollar budget, one percent of that would be eight million. So if we generate an eight-million-dollar surplus this year, half of that can be used for funding our pay-as-you-go capital or our reserves. But we're going to cap that at two million. We can only use two million of that half. And again, we're doing this because we're, we still know that we're coming out of the recession. We're still not where we want to be. So part of this is also to come back to you every two to three years and say, okay, where are we financially? Let's change our parameters, let's change our surplus parameters on how we deposit money into reserves. Or do we need to increase our reserve amounts? Again, we want to make sure that we can achieve these. We don't want to put goals out there that we can't get to. And anytime we draw money from here, from these funds, we will always come back to you. We will need council authorization. And when and if we ever ask you to draw money from here, the city manager will be obligated to submit a plan to you for replenishment within three years. So those are the things that the rating agencies will look for, is some sort of plan of action. And there is, in your presentation, there is an appendix area that details that whole section out. So let's talk about debt management policies for a little bit. We've had longstanding debt management policies in our budget documents.
So we're going to get, is there, is there an agenda item here that's pressing that we should get to?
Yes, here's the...
Can we break this into another segment for next week or something?
Sure, we can. The main thing for us is when we go to borrow money, go before the rating agencies at the beginning of September, we've made a commitment to them that we would have financial policies. So Sabrina has shared with you probably eighty percent of them, and the...
All right. We can do this next week. I just, I mean, we've got some people here apparently came to...
Sure.
Maybe listen to another presentation, and I just want to make sure we get...
No, no, we can. The goal is to get a resolution passed sometime in July.
Yeah.
We are going to go to the market.
So let's tee this debt, the debt management piece of this up for next, for Tuesday.
Sure.
Okay. And then we can all ask our questions then if we have comments.
Ms. Mayor, is the...
Just seeing like a logical point to bring in, that's all. Okay.
For the remaining time, are we doing senior disabled tax relief for chickens? What's the, what's the...
Chickens can't take long. We'll have thirteen minutes.
Right.
I don't know how much of the history we need of chickens. Can we just go to the proposal?
Sure.
With the options?
Sure. Okay. That's fine. Okay. All right. So with that said, the quick, the quick queue up, it's the last time we talked about chickens. We left you with the health department administering the program and having a minimum of one acre. Ron has been working with the planning department as well as with the health department, and we have a couple of options for you that are less than a half an acre.
So since that time in, in January, the health department has promulgated regulations and are prepared to issue permits. Really what we left you with in the last discussion that you were talking about was the size of the lot that we would permit this. And so that's what's before. It's what we had was a, yeah, what we had was a, was an acre. And that's about a hundred to a hundred-and-fifty parcels. General consensus around the table, if we recall, was that, well, that's, that's not enough. So the next option would be twenty-thousand square feet, which is approximately a half acre. That would be about nine-hundred-and-seventy-five parcels. If we were to do that, we would recommend that six hens be the maximum. The next option would be ten thousand square feet, which is the quarter acre. That was your last discussion, basically, is a half acre, quarter acre, which would give you approximately eighty-four-hundred parcels that are identified here. And we would recommend that be a maximum of four hens on the parcel.
Yeah.
All right. So the question is, do you mean option, option, what was the first option?
Option one is basically a half acre.
Are we asking for our feedback tonight on whether to do option one or option two?
Yes. We're prepared to bring an ordinance.
When?
On July eleventh.
Can we call Sabrina?
Do what?
Can we call Sabrina? Ask the audience.
Looking at option two, you can see where most of the red is. Barclay and I will get most of the calls for complaints. Really, I mean, Portsmouth, Portsmouth just passed. Terry and I have been gigging the city about this because Portsmouth's public health director and planning director said opposite of ours, recommend, recommendation. So, and they passed theirs.
The director sitting behind you, you gotta...
They passed. They passed.
It's passed, and I'm really curious about the science between four hens in ten and six hens in twenty. I'm looking at New York City, they have no limits on the amount of chickens. None. None. And they have had no complaints. I, I'm really curious about this because we don't limit dogs, which produce so much more noise, so much more waste.
But we do. We limit...
You can limit on dogs.
Well, we don't limit it to size of their lives.
No.
And we don't limit it to proximity to water.
There, there are lots of citizens in Norfolk who are anxious and excited about option two and getting it out there and are willing to go and help and educate the public about actually why this is a good thing. In fact, there's some sitting here today that came down because they thought we were voting on it today. I've tried to respond back to as many as I could and told them we're not voting on it today, but we're considering it. And I think this was a good compromise when we discussed this last time, that we're not opening it up to the whole city, but to those lots that wouldn't, you know, generally, it would have disturbed their neighbors if that was an issue, they had more of the land size to allow them to be able to have it.
Well, let me say, I don't live in New York City, and I don't know what they do up there.
I just don't.
Okay.
What part of that didn't you hear?
Well, okay. I'm not sure I believe that they don't have any problems with chickens in New York City. But I've always been of the opinion that if you're going to try something new, you ought to be careful about the way you do it. And that's why, I mean, I would support option one, and if we, we can come back and visit it in a year, if we're not having a lot of problems, then we can go to, that's just me. So I would support option one. And maybe we can go around, and that's the half acre aside, right?
If, if, if a community has a homeowners association, does this ordinance supersede any docs that have been in place previous? How would that work, Larry?
That if you had something like the Planet East Beach, where there are restrictions, those restrictions would govern over what our ordinance would allow. But they would have the option, if they wanted to, to change them. But, but in a conflict between a restriction on a plant's community, the restriction will govern.
Okay. Do you want to go around the table and just forecast so they can bring us an ordinance?
Could somebody just tell me, how big is 20,000? Show the map for that.
The number of parcels?
Could you show the map?
Yes.
So there's absolutely nothing on the enlarged one.
The option two is, the setbacks would remain the same, basically, is the criteria that we've established in the requirements.
No, no roosters, can't sell eggs. It's all sustainable.
You can give them away.
You can't give them away, yes. We're saving cartons in our house. Sustainable.
Are there five votes for any one of these options?
I'm option two.
Okay. We have one.
Paul, you?
I'm against it, but I vote for option one. I'm against chickens.
Two. Right. One.
Two, two, two.
I don't know. I think option number one, half acre.
Option two.
All right. So anybody keep score. Four, four. Four to four.
Bring them both and see what happens.
I'm sure we can do some horse trading on that day.
I, I agree. I think we are really making, spending more time and energy on this than...
I wonder what's driving it. How did it get here?
Because we brought it up because we've had citizens that have come to us. And that was back when we used to have committees.
I don't know that I have a real conception of a quarter of an acre. I don't know what I, if I have a conception of a quarter of an acre and a half. I know, but still, I, I need to see it. I'll find it between...
Most of your lots are baby.
100 by 200 means nothing to me.
Most of your lots are baby.
I'll find it, I'll look at it, and I'll find it and I'll look at it this week. I'll find a half an acre, and I'll find a...
Angela, Angela, large one. Okay? Those are 50 by 100 or whatever. So those are not, not...
Most of your standard lot sizes in Norfolk are 50 by 100, and that would eliminate almost the whole city.
I would suggest we bring out those up or down because we stopped on the bond rating as well as the senior tax relief. Talk about chickens running around your backyard, so let's bring it up and let's get it done.
But we've asked for this presentation.
I understand.
A year and a half ago is when this first came up. Portsmouth did it in two months.
I can take option two. You want to go option two?
I got five for option two.
You got option two.
Let's go. Option two it is. Thanks very much. No lobbying, no lobbying behind the scenes there, right? Let it go.
Didn't have to lay five on that one. You didn't get a field house either.
Got my field house.
You already had your field.
How is this going to be regulated?
Both departments.
Same way we regulate people and the kitchens in your house.
The permits would be issued by the health department. Dr. Lindsay's here.
It came with birds, bunnies, and bees. Paul, that's how we got it. We got the birds.
The issue went to the permit.
But we got the bunnies and the bees. The only thing that was left was the bird.
At least by next week, could you tell us if there are going to be any cost associated with this? And how you would, I mean, what the process would be?
Sure.
Okay? I mean, you have code officials who are going to go out there.
For him.
I mean...
It'd be the same, it'd be the same that they regulate people and dogs.
Same as they do with dogs.
We don't have enough people to do that.
As if they don't have enough to do.
That's a little... You know, good people do, are not going to treat chickens the way they treat their dogs.
That's true.
No, they're going to treat them better.
They're going to keep the chickens outside, people keep the dogs inside.
I mean, you shouldn't belittle this.
The chickens will be...
We could laugh at it.
But first you have...
First, I would say you have laughed at it, and secondly, you've allowed conjecture to make decisions. And you need to be thinking about common sense rules and why other cities have recognized that this can be done safely.
All right. Now you're preaching.
So you're telling me, you're asking...
I'm asking questions, but Anthony, also, Anthony, Anthony, there are two council members who have done enough homework on this.
I respect that, I respect that. But I'm saying, you can't say that this is the same thing as...
All right, okay.
This is different. This is not...
The chickens are...
They can't eat it.
It's just for eggs.
My wife's...